Feels nice to have that gavel again. Good evening and welcome for the first time in over 14 months to the live in-person meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. The day is June 17th, 2021. Calling this meeting to order, please ask you to silence your cell phones. I haven't had to say that in a very long time, or mute yourself. I'll introduce the board at this time. At my far right, your far left, is James Morse, who is an associate member of the board. You'll see an empty seat next to him. That is Scott Solinsky. He'll be joining us shortly. To my immediate right, and for the last time, Ken Foreman, who is our vice chair. My name is TJ Hury. I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. To his left is Mary Berry, who is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman and Ashley DeMello. Jump into the introductory remarks. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and also from the public, and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself, and we ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, and I'll ask you to come to the podium. To my right, your left, we ask you to please state your name and address for the record. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. We will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date in time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, and we would make a motion to either deny or approve. It would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a supermajority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three-to-two vote, would be to failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to the agenda for the night, we do have public comment followed by one continuation and four new public hearings. So for public comment, this portion is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone out there has anything to say on something that is not on the agenda tonight, go ahead up to the podium. All right, seeing none, as the board's chair, I'm going to exercise a little bit of discretion here. Ken, I do have a couple of accolades to present to you on behalf of several dignitaries, both local, state. So up first, we do have something from the governor's office. It says, "Ken Foreman, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your 13 years of dedicated service as a volunteer for the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals and your service as chair and vice chair of the board. This 17th day of June in the year 2021. Signed, our governor, Charles D. Baker, and Lieutenant Governor Karen E. Polito."
Wow, suitable for framing.
And we're not done yet.
Wow, look at that one.
This is from the State Senate. It's official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Ken Foreman in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the town of Falmouth, and be it known, or be it further known, that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested, and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the Senate. And of course, that's signed by Senate President Karen Spiltka, Clerk of the Senate Michael Hurley, and it was offered up by our State Senator Sue Moran.
How wonderful. Well, thank you. We can all see.
Well deserved.
We do have another one here from the State House of Representatives. Citation, "Be it hereby known that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Ken Foreman in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the town of Falmouth and your contributions to our entire community. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors." That is signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the House, and it was offered up by both of Falmouth's state reps, Representative Dylan Fernandez and Representative Dave Viera. And last but not least, on the local level, we have former chair of the ZBA, Matthew McNamara. He says, "Dear Chairman Hury, I have learned that Ken Foreman is stepping down from the Zoning Board of Appeals due to term limits. Through you, I wish to acknowledge and thank Ken for his extraordinary service to the town of Falmouth. As a member of the board, it was a distinct privilege for me to serve as his colleague. Ken's dedication, intelligence, and wit made me a better member. Very truly yours, Matt McNamara."
Maybe Matt will come back on the board.
Maybe he will, I hear. There may be a few vacancies, Matt McNamara, if you're out there listening.
Well, thank you. Thank you, TJ.
You're welcome. And there's more, but that'll be later.
How many years on the planning board?
It's about a decade on the planning board, yeah.
I was using rough numbers from your CV online, so if the governor's office got the numbers wrong, my apologies.
No, I think you got it right.
Excellent.
So you're moving on to the conservation division now?
What a quality. Hopefully, if they appoint me.
And 300 committee?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Should recognize Ken's wife.
Yeah, my wife took photos.
Did she just jump out?
Where is she?
Where is she?
Come back here.
Coming for an encore.
Thank you.
She's not interested in the meeting, I can assure you.
We're congratulating Ken's better half for lending him to us.
Thank you very much.
I think it was more like, get out of the house.
So that does it for public comment, I suppose. Moving on to the continuations. With this application, we do have a bit of a quorum issue with Scott not available, and Ed Van Kuren is not with us tonight. But Scott will be with us, and we'll be able to carry on this later in the evening. So I'll make a motion to table this continuation, application 50-20, until later in the evening when Scott arrives.
Second.
All right. I make the motion. Ken seconds it. The voting members on this are myself, Ken. Actually, no, it's a straight vote by all of us. So I made the motion, Ken seconded it. We'll do right to left. James?
James Morse, aye.
Ken?
Ken Foreman, aye.
TJ Hury, aye.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Mary?
Mary Berry, aye.
All right, so it carries unanimously. Continuation is being tabled at the moment, and we'll continue straight down the list with our new hearings. And I just remembered something. We don't have to do local votes for everything.
We don't need roll call votes, no.
No, it's all very strange.
Love it. Not the good times. Keep on rolling here. All right. So up first, we have new hearings starting at 6:30. Application 34-21. Griffin, 134 Gifford Street in Falmouth. It's requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming detached garage.
So, application number 34-21. Martin Thomas Griffin, 40 Ocean Street, Quincy, Mass. has applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming detached garage on subject property known as 134 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Gifford Street is a public right of way, and Barry Street is a private right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the public right of way. Any changes within the public right of way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of abutters or public rights of way. And four, we recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. And there was an email in here regarding the revised plans, and we did receive a revised site plan for the above referenced property that did incorporate drywells in the revised Conservation. Conservation staff have no comments on the above reference because it's outside of Concom Water Department, no comment. Assessors Department, no comment. Planning, no comment. Health has no issues with the project, providing there is no sleeping space above the garage, which there is not on the plans. And no correspondence for or against.
All right. And for the applicant, do we have a Robert Blair in the audience today? All right. Anyone want to plan? Physical planning?
So, Mr. Chairman, board members, on behalf of the client, my name is Robert Blair. The existing garage is in severe disrepair, and the client would like to remove that structure and replace it with a two-car garage. There will be no living space within the building. It's just going to be used for a garage. I understand that there's a special permit required due to setback requirements. The existing setbacks are four and five feet, respectively. We are proposing to keep those setbacks as they are, but I do understand that there is a possibility. You have a set of plans before you that show a 23 and a half by 22-foot garage, two-car garage. If there's a possibility to extend that by an additional two feet to allow for better safety getting in and out of the car, because the garage as shown is about as tight as you can make it with an architectural plan and still have two cars available. If that's possible within administrative, I don't know if it's a waiver, but it's still within the special permit, that would increase the percentage of coverage above the 20%. So the existing plan that you have before you shows a 19.9% coverage. What I'm proposing is what I had originally submitted, but had not at the time realized that it was above 20%. So the additional size of two feet extra would amount to 21% coverage if that's allowable and acceptable to the board. If not, we will proceed, hopefully with your permission, with the 19.9%.
All right. Anything else, or do you want to turn it over to board questions?
Yeah, any questions, please.
Sounds good. James, anything?
Just to be clear, your nonconformities as to the setbacks are not going to increase, and you're just adding two feet essentially on one side of the building?
Yes, sir. The proposal was for a 24 by 26, I believe, which would add an additional 100 square feet. So, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, James. Ken?
I think I'm reading the plan. It says 23 and a half.
That's the plans you have before you, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I guess what concerns me is why not move the building to the east one foot and then conform on all sides?
I wanted to try to do that, and given the lot size and the fact that they just put in a brand-new septic system, I didn't want the driveway to impede on the septic system at all. So it became difficult to try to angle the building and still have it fit on the lot without asking for additional forgiveness on the setbacks. I wanted to keep the setbacks the way they are.
Okay. Well, that was my question.
All right. Bob? So the question on that is, so do you have a plan already prepared with the new dimensions on it that you could submit?
I do.
And I had a question regarding the fencing. So on the engineer's plan, it shows that there's a fence on the property that's actually on the property next door. Is that the fence for this property, or is that?
That's the existing fence.
And is it owned by this property?
I believe so.
So normally, when that happens, we would ask that the fence actually be moved so that it's encompassed on that property?
Put it right on the property line?
Yeah, there's enough room for that.
It won't affect any of the setbacks. I just...
Just so it's on your property and we don't have a situation?
Right. That's just how it was recorded by the surveyor.
So I guess my question would be, instead of having to do this administratively, if it was possible to go over the information this evening and he could actually submit an updated plan, we could actually...
Or if it's acceptable, you can just vote that, he submit that, and I'll make sure...
Per revised plans, if we're...
Well, if he has the plan, he could submit it here now.
I don't, the problem is, the plan that I have shows the dimensions, but it doesn't have all the rest of the information on it, like the drywells and everything else that was asked for. The original plan, I scrapped because it was over the allowable square footage, so that's how I came up with the plan that's before you. I do have architectural plans that show the original dimensions, but without all of the other information that you require.
And when, if that was enlarged, the extra two feet, does that have any issues with distances to septic or anything?
No. The driveway would not change. It would just be angled in towards the entrance of the garage.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's the only question.
Mary?
No questions.
All right.
If it helps, can I?
What do you have there?
This is the plan that shows the larger dimension.
Supposed to be, Bob, can we stamp this in?
If I can understand.
All right. God only knows what date that goes on it, huh? Oh. Ooh. You guys are on? My apologies. You said that plan shows the, is it the revised?
It shows the enlarged footprint of the garage, but it does not show all the other details, such as the drip edge, drainage, and drywell information that was required.
So when you did the, because it doesn't show where the setbacks or anything are, so...
The setbacks are the same.
So you still have 1.8 on the side of the garage?
No. The side of the garage, I'm sorry, I'm not sure where you're looking at 1.8.
So...
Should be four feet on the side and five feet in the back, I believe?
Yeah. Were you looking at that 1.8?
Yeah.
Drywall's coming up the notation of what the setback is. Difficult to see.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to put all the information on the plan.
All right. So what's the distance from the, is there a change at all with the roof overhang from what's there currently?
Shouldn't be, no.
So the four feet that you have on here is actually to the, to this roof overhang?
The four feet was the sidewall. That was the existing footprint. When it was measured from the edge of the property to the, to the structure, it was measured to the sidewall, not to the drip edge, because there was virtually no drip edge on the existing facility.
Yeah, so right now, what's there, that little shed section, doesn't have any overhang, correct? It just stops.
Yeah, virtually, it's a paper roof.
That's the only question I have.
All right. All right. James, go ahead. Follow-up question?
You indicated it was 21%. The increase to revised plan is 21% by structures. Do you have the percentage of structures, paving, and parking on the revised plan?
I'm sorry, say again?
You said the revised plan has 21% of lot coverage of structures. Do you have a revised percentage of structures, paving, and parking?
No, that would be, the paving and parking would be the same, or actually, the paving, there is no paving.
You have 32.2. I just didn't know what the increase was going to be based on a revised plan. Just looking for a number, just for our findings.
According to the surveyor, it was 21% of coverage. I'm not sure of any of the other percentages.
Thank you.
All right. All set with board questions at the moment? All right. Public comment. Any question, comments, or concerns regarding this project? All right, seeing none, back to the board. See how much crook that is in person?
Yeah, so just a quick comment, because I think it could work with the larger garage. I just, I just think we should have a plan showing the new dimensions, the new lot coverages, the...
Sure. That puts them over the 20%.
Yeah, I mean, it just would be, if he's already prepared, it'd just be easier to continue with, to get the updates on the new plan and the...
If I might, Mr. Dugan?
Yeah.
The site plan that I have from the surveyor indicated a, that's what indicated the 21%. So the plan that I gave you showing the enlarged footprint should have on the site plan the calculation for the square footage.
For the larger one?
Yes. So I actually had two certified site plans.
Structures, parking, and paving, saying he's on the plan.
No, I know, but do we have a second site plan? We only have one site plan, correct?
No, but he just handed you...
Yeah, but this is just plans of the building. Do you have something else that shows another site plan with this?
I do. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find it. There is the site plan on the drawing that does show the percentages, though.
So the one that I have, at least, is November 13, 2019, revised April 22, 2021.
And then, yeah, and the plan, the one that you just passed us, which is the new plan that you'd like to modify, that one's dated May 31 of 2019. It doesn't appear to have a revision date on it. And the only other question is, normally, we do the distances by overhang. So is the overhang on this building an issue?
So he says he's using the same footprint, and are you saying that the existing structure does not have an overhang?
So the existing doesn't have, it just goes, it's like a shed, so it just kind of goes flat on one side. So there isn't an overhang. So, I mean, you may be able to do this and just move it over so it meets the same sideline, but...
Plus the two feet on top of that, if we were...
Yeah, I mean, I...
If we were willing to grant that.
I don't have any measurement on it, so...
Yeah, that's my fault, because the surveyor, when they took the original dimensions, since there was no overhang, they took it to the edge of the building.
Yeah, I mean, mistakes can happen. It's just that we would need to see something updated that actually showed the dimensions to the overhang, and then the new footprint size, and then if there was a change to the driveway.
So it might just be cleaner if we get those revisions.
It would be easier if we could just get revisions on your new plan.
Okay.
With the lot coverage, asking for the, to go over the 20%, which you would need, and then showing the setback from the overhang of the new, of the new structure.
Okay.
For the sideline.
I guess the question I have is, does anyone besides me feel like, well, if they can expand the size of the garage by two feet, they ought to be able to improve the setback a little bit?
Yeah.
You know, because the argument was that you didn't want to make, move the building because it would encroach on the septic, but yet you can make it two feet wider.
Yeah, the two feet is probably not an issue. If I have to go four feet, it might start...
No, but can you improve it a little, is the question? Because if we're granting you more lot coverage, it would be nice to get some improvement to the setback nonconformity.
Uh...
Even a foot or two, you know, on either side. It is, I mean, I've visited the site. It's kind of crammed in the corner there.
Would it be okay to keep the existing setback? And since we're considering shortening it because of the overhang, if we can just keep the existing setback at four feet and five feet? It's four on the side and five in the back.
Right.
But that would, if we kept the existing setbacks, including the overhang, would that be acceptable?
And still make it bigger?
If that's acceptable to the board?
That's where I'm having just a little touch of hard burn.
So the, the, sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, because, you know, you're going, now you're going to the point where you need a special permit for lot coverage, as well as, so you're actually increasing your nonconformities rather than, you know, if we can say, well, you've improved the setback nonconformity, but now you need a special permit for the lot coverage.
I mean, I don't want to overcomplicate it, because I know the owner is anxious to replace what's there and appease some of the complaints from the abutters because of...
Let me throw this one out there, because I'm not hearing much opposition about giving another two feet. If you can improve that side yard, that side yard setback from four to five, would that, the board would be willing to give you that extra two feet?
I'm sure that would be easily done.
What, so you mentioned there was an issue, what was the issue with the abutters? What, so, so you mentioned there was an issue, what was the issue with the abutters?
Oh, just, the owner's receiving complaints about, uh, vermin entering and exiting the, uh, because it's fallen, it's fallen apart. So, and the, he just renovated the house, so he would like to have the entire property, uh, finished, as it were.
Yeah. Anyway, that's just my two cents.
It, it doesn't seem like changing the width is gonna actually come closer to the septic system, it would be the depth.
I, I, I didn't think so.
So, it, it, I mean, it should be easy enough just to move the building over.
Yeah, so what if, what if he improves that side yard to five, and then we give him the two feet at all? Looking for a consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary, okay with that?
And just show it on a plan.
Alright, with the understanding
Updated coverages and...
Right, with, with the understanding of that side yard setback at that five feet, that would be at the overhang, not the...
Yeah, so you just figured the five-foot setback from the overhang.
So the, the five is the rear, which doesn't have an overhang?
Well, in, in, improving the four, yeah. So what, I, I guess what we're saying is, improve the side yard setback going from four to five?
Right, so there were
That five-foot setback includes the point from the overhang?
Right, the, the overhang would be probably ten to twelve inches, so, right.
Right. Alright, so we'd be looking for revised plans to show that, and I'm not
Show the lot coverage, and then just show, um, you could show on the new revised plan, it's easy enough that you're relocating the side fence onto the property.
Sounds good to me. Is that o- that okay?
You're the boss.
Alright, no. Um, I'm, I'm guessing they're fairly easy revisions for you to do, could you have a quick turnaround?
Um, I'll accept the site plan part, if, if I have to go back to the surveyor, it's gonna cost the owner some more money. Uh, I'd prefer not to have to do that if I don't have to.
So, so even if we did this administratively, we'd have to have a site plan?
Yeah, they'll need it for the building
We'd have, we'd physically have to have a site
Do you need it certified? Okay.
So continue to dig.
Clear, are there any objections filed that we can let them know about that, uh?
I didn't hear, Bob, I don't think there were, were there?
Just wanna be clear.
No, no, there was nothing in the file, the only, the only mention
Haven't had public comment.
Yes.
You know, it was the presenter, so...
Maybe someone out there harbors vermin resentment.
Noreen, I was trying to get them in quicker rather than later, but we do have
I guess the question would be, how long it might take to get the site plan? For picking a date, or do you want to approve it pending receipt of the updated plan?
Could do that.
Do what?
You know, basically, approve it pending receipt of the so the receipt of the plan, that could all be done administratively.
So per revised plans, if we were to vote on it tonight?
Right.
Okay.
And then just get it off your agenda.
And, and then what do we do, Noreen, for, um, for findings on lot coverage or anything, we just leave that? Mention that that will be updated by the administrator?
Right, so you can put in, he has provided you the lot coverage by structures, and then we will just add whatever the lot coverage by structure, parking, and paving, with the assumption that it doesn't exceed the forty percent that's allowed in the district.
Alright, I'm comfortable with that, how's everyone?
It's fine.
Yep.
Alright. Would anyone like to make a motion to close the hearing now?
So, motion to close.
Wait, do you wanna get any public, just in, have you asked for a public?
I did.
Oh, you did?
There was none.
Oh, um, you have to point and vote, vote him.
Oh, okay, um, if I didn't already do it, then obviously, Mary and James are voting members on this, so we have a full
Full quorum.
Full five-member quorum. Now can we close the hearing?
We can, so motion to close.
Alright, motion to close by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. That would be the board's pleasure.
So, motion to approve with conditions?
Motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by Ken, excellent, findings?
Uh, two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. Uh, we should put that the current structure is in disrepair and needs replacement. Uh, testimony by applicant was that the, uh, and shown by the current plot plan is that the, uh, the side fence is on the neighbor's property, and that will be relocated onto this property. Um, applicant asked to modify the size of the garage by two feet. Um, that revised plan would have to be submitted to the administrator for review and sign-off. And the board is, um, agreeable to that, uh, as long as they increase the sideline dimension to the overhang to five feet. Uh, you'll have to add the findings and of the lot coverages or building coverages, because I don't have any.
Excuse me, Mr. Dugan?
Yep.
The five feet, the current setback is five feet in the rear and four feet on the side, do, do you want?
The side yard would be five, side yard will go to five feet.
Okay.
Uh, we can put, if finding that dry wells are shown on the plan, and they will also have to be on the revised plan for the new size. Uh, testimony was that the structure is just for use as a garage and storage, uh, there'll be no habitable space. The referral by the health department, uh, that has inadequate septic is also based that there will be no habitable space. And that whatever our revised plans are that are submitted will have to be the same plan that's submitted to the building department. Also finding that there is no, uh, heat in the garage or plumbing.
Alright, conditions?
Uh, will be per the revised plans to be submitted to the zoning administrator. Uh, fence to be relocated onto subject's prop- own property.
Improve Westerly setback to five feet.
Yeah, improve the Westerly to five feet.
From the drip edge
From the drip edge overhang.
Be clear.
Uh, property not to have, uh, the garage not to have any habitable space, uh, heat or plumbing. Uh, will have dry well, so that might have to be revised on the plan, depending on what the dimensions of the garage are.
Alright, anything else?
Then we got the fences, that'll be relocated.
Alright, anything else for findings or conditions?
Uh, and then the only condition would be, they'll have to update their lot coverage in public park and, structure parking and paving.
Alright, I think that just about does it. Alright, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mr. Blair, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, up next we have application thirty-five dash twenty-one, Dominguez, one thirty-four Carriage Shop Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow an accessory structure or therapy building exceeding nine hundred square feet in size.
Ma- uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, point of order before, uh, Board Member Dugan reads, um, referrals and other things into the record.
Sure. Are, are you the applicant's representative?
Uh, Michael W. Selly, Thelma, Engineering, representing the applicant. I, I was asked to assist in the presentation of the special permit application that was prepared by the applicant. Uh, Mr. Dominguez, Michael Dominguez, who's in the office, I mean, in the, uh, audience, you've, um, reviewed his property on two other occasions for two other special permits, and I think there's been a miscommunication in the application that was filed before you, to the point that I think, um, it's not necessary. And I'd like to tell you why, and I'd like you to make a finding if you agree, um, that no special permit is necessary.
Okay, uh, Noreen, would we still have to read it into the record, or is, is, we're kinda operating outside the scope of this hearing?
Probably best to do that, and then you can
Withdraw if
both to determine whichever you wanna do.
I just don't, didn't want you to read referrals and everything, they're not applicable if there's no special permit pending, because I believe that there's no special permit necessary for this, so reading referrals that are unrelated to, uh...
But we also need to read, we need to read the hearing into the record.
Sure, that I, I would agree, makes sense.
Yeah, they could withdraw.
Right, because you, you could just do a withdrawal.
Yeah, but we, we, we were told we needed a special permit, so we wanna have something on the record that says we don't need a special permit.
Well, you, you'll have that if you have a withdrawal, alright?
If you, if you're, if this board concurs, yes.
Right, okay, alright, so...
Alright, so if I read it again, I'm gonna have to do the referrals, but even though we know they may not be applicable, so I'll just, I'll just read it and open it up.
Alright.
Um, application thirty-five dash twenty-one, Michael W. Dominguez, one thirty-four Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth, Mass, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three G of the code of Thelma to allow an accessory structure exceeding nine hundred square feet in size on subject property known as one thirty-four Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth. Uh, for referrals. Uh, from engineering, uh, engineering department reviewed the plot plan for one thirty-four Carriage Shop Road, sheet one of two for the above referenced project dated September twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen, last revised five thirteen, two thousand twenty-one. The last revision of the plan shows the cobbles and riprap mentioned in our five twelve, two thousand twenty-one review. As previously stated, these objects may require a license from the select board, or a permit from engineering to remove them. We defer to the zoning board of appeals if this matter should be cleared up, or a condition should be included in any approval. Uh, also for engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Carriage Shop Road is a public right of way in this area, no alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stolen wire runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. Four, there was cobble curving and riprap installed in the town right of way that may require a license from the select board. Based on the aerial photos, it appears that this work in the right of way was done between March twenty seventeen and April twenty eighteen, and we have no records of a permit. Refer to the board if a license should be applied for, within the select board for approval, or if the condition should be included to obtain the license. Another option is to remove the structures from the right of way, this would require a permit from engineering, uh, to do the work in the right of way. Dry wells are shown on the plan as we typically recommend. Six, we do not have an address in record for the attached discuss- accessory apartment shown on the plan. We consulted with the Thelma Fire Rescue, and they indicated that the garage and proposed building should also have the addresses assigned. Please inform the applicant that they should contact the engineering division to assign the addresses prior to filing for a building permit. Addresses will aid in, in an emergency response. For reference, these will be the addresses for this parcel, main house one thirty-four, accessory one thirty-four A, garage one thirty-four, building two, uh, physical therapy one thirty-four, building three. Seven, we recommend the following condition be included, which is section ninety-nine-one, affixing of level, legible numbers, time limit for performance. Uh, health has no issue with the project, the therapy room is not gonna be used for any sleeping purposes. Uh, health wrote that the current house is assessed as a four-bedroom, the accessory structure would be a fifth bedroom on the property, since the lot is greater than fifty thousand square feet, an AI system will not be required for the accessory bylaw for properties in coastal power overlay. And again, he said he wouldn't consider the physical therapy as an additional bedroom. Con, 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 has no comment outside the jurisdiction, fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. No comment from the assessors, no comment from the water, no comment from planning, uh, no letters for or against.
Alright, Mr. Selly?
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, so, um, just by, by way of background, Mr. Dominguez applied for a, uh, building permit to build a, an accessory structure on his property that would be used for the purposes of a, uh, therapy pool and related pertinences in the building, such as a small kitchenette. When he applied for the building permit, it was recommended that he verify that there's no need for a special permit. And through whatever miscommunication, I, I think there was some miscommunication, because he, um, was instructed to apply under two forty dash thirty-eight. And if you read two forty dash thirty-eight, which I've highlighted a section of here, special permit uses, and it outlines them specifically, he was asked to file under two forty thirty-eight G. And then, and that is for the following accessory uses, garage space for more than two cars, if the footprint of the garage is more than nine hundred square feet. So what we, uh, what we have here is a twelve-hundred-square-foot accessory building, it's not a garage. I know of no provision in the zoning bylaw that requires a special permit for an accessory building, this is not a garage. So that's, I think there was some miscommunication, and unless someone can clarify, or, or
No, so I, so I went through the bylaw book too, and I don't see where we have a bylaw that even allows us to give a special permit for a therapy building.
Alright.
So for that reason, I don't think the referrals, I think they're moot, and that, that this is, um, perhaps, it's a stretch even, a modification of a previous special permit that was issued. Two special permits were issued, um, and if I can just share the drawing with you.
So just a quick question, Mr. Selly, is, is the building commissioner saying he won't give a permit without a special permit?
He was giving Mr. Dominguez a alert that he might wanna check, so he's not surprised. They ha- they're ready to sign off on the building permit. So, um, if, if you look at the plan, this is your entire file that Ashley was nice enough to share with me. But within the file, my site plan, which is at the very back. Property is at one thirty-four Carriage Shop. You, you re- you reviewed, or this board did, two special permits, one for an accessory apartment in this building, which is, um, approved, and one for a modification that allowed for an addition to a, a twenty-by-fifty-six, uh, addition to this garage. Uh, Mr. Doming- Dominguez operates his business out of this facility, he lives here, his family, his mom, who's in the audience, lives nearby. Um, there's several neighbors in support here tonight, but this is all, I think, unnecessary, because the proposed PT building, which is for his grandson, uh, which is a accessory building and not a garage, doesn't need a special permit in my mind. So, I, I think, since we went through the time, energy, and effort and money to do this, we should at least get a finding or a vote that you would agree that no special permit is necessary. And we'd withdraw our application. And hopefully, we should then be able to get us the, uh, building permit issued, because the zoning department should be able to sign off.
Alright, let's see if we have any questions for Mr. Selly, James?
Not this time.
Alright, Ken?
No, I think he's correct.
Alright, Bob?
No.
Mary?
Yeah.
Alright.
I, I do have a question just for the administrator, so, um, how, how do we do something like this? I mean, is it okay just to make a finding that, that we don't have a there is no bylaw that allows us to give a special permit for a therapy buil- I mean, I understand why they need it, and I think they should have it, I'm, I'm wondering if the building commissioner did it just because there was a mention of a kitchenette, which I know isn't gonna be used as a living space, but because they have a apartment special permit already on property, does the with the current building as proposed, cause any issues with the accessory apartment bylaw? Or can the building department just put a condition on it, that, because they usually don't condition?
That's a good question, um, I think if you agree that this does not require a special permit, what would be transmitted to the building department would be essentially that statement. Um, but I think that the expectation would be that if the building department issues the permit, and the zoning board is not involved, that they would essentially stand in your stead, as, you know, and they would say, okay, there's already an accessory apartment on the property, so therefore, this cannot be converted to an accessory apartment, because it would violate the bylaw.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just asking how that actually gets in there, so that if they don't have a neighbor down the road that says you have a structure that was put up that actually meets conditions of the accessory apartment bylaw? Just so they don't have a problem down the road if somebody complains.
Right, so I, I think what Mr. Selly is suggesting to you is that this does not fall under
As a physical therapy building?
Right, and so- Right, and so I think if you agree with that, your finding would be that would support that you understand that this use is for a physical therapy structure and that it's not going to be an accessory apartment, and that, that's what would go into the record.
The floor plans clearly show what the use is of.
They do.
Oh, sure.
And the building department has the floor plans.
Still, a finding doesn't hurt.
No, it just protects us.
And you.
All right. I'll side with the board for now.
Yeah.
Just maintaining formalities of the hearing, of public comment. If there's any question, comment, or concern from members of the public? Anyone at all? All right, not seeing anyone, back to the board then. I think we all seem to be in agreement here.
Yes, I guess we would make a motion just to make a finding that this use is for a physical therapy accessory structure. Not being presented, it would be used as an accessory apartment, and as such, we don't have any authority to give a special permit.
All right, I like that.
How about saying no special permit is required?
Yeah, and as such, no special permit is required.
All right, the voting members on this project, I'm gonna appoint Mary and James. I know it sounds funny because there's five of us here, but I think I do need to say that. Need to close the hearing first.
Move to close.
Second.
All right, motion closed made by Ken, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. Would the board like to proceed?
So, go with just, the board would just make a finding, again, that this structure, that this use for a physical therapy structure. They're applying for the use as a physical therapy structure, not as an accessory apartment, as such...
Or a garage.
Yeah, or a garage.
Or a garage, good.
Which is what thirty-eight G is about.
Good point.
And, you know, the elevations clearly show it's not a garage. The floor plans show that.
And as such, would not qualify for a special permit.
Very good. All right, so Bob, you were making that motion? Was there a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Bresselli, thank you. All right, up next, we have application thirty-six dash twenty-one, Mooney the Third, trustee, one eighty-eight Gansett Road in Woods Hole, requesting a special permit to allow the existing non-conforming boathouse to be reconstructed and allow a detached garage with living space above in the front yard more than fifty feet from the property line.
So, application number thirty-six dash twenty-one, James F. Mooney the Third, trustee, care of Amen Clower LLP, thirty-nine Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Is applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash sixty-eight A eight and two forty dash three C of the code of Falmouth to allow the existing non-conforming boathouse be reconstructed and allow a detached garage with living space above in the front yard more than fifty feet from the front property line. The subject property is one eighty-eight Gansett Road, Woods Hole. For referrals.
Come on in, Scott.
Sorry, folks?
No worries.
Saved you space. Sort of.
So, from engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Gansett Road is a private right of way in this area. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public rights of way. Four, drywells are proposed for the roof stormwater mitigation. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per subsection ninety-nine-one, affixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance. Six, where this project falls in the jurisdiction of Concom, we recommend deferring to Concom for stormwater management and erosion controls. From Concom, Concom recently closed the hearing for the request to raise the existing single-family dwelling and to construct and maintain a new single-family dwelling with an attached garage, new Title V sewage disposal system, in-ground swimming pool, spa, pool deck, cabana, boathouse, terraces, parking court, retaining walls, walkways, turf paths, fire pit, to conduct invasive species management, install restoration and mitigation plantings, and for all associated clearing, excavating, grading utilities. Drainage and landscaping at the above referenced property, an order of conditions for the project has not yet been issued and will be discussed during the conservation commission's hearing of five nineteen. I assume we might have an update on that. From historical, applicant filed with HC, the HC decision and approved plans will be emailed to you. This was dated May fourth, twenty-one. And they did submit the certificate of appropriateness of one eighty-eight Gansett Road. Got their information there. From the water department, the existing water main and services must be on the plan. The proposed detached garage with living space must have a separate entrance. I'm sorry, separate service entrance. The existing lot has a meter pit that feeds the site, which will have to be abandoned. A new or rebuilt home will need to have a new meter installed inside the home. From the health department, a permit for health still needs to be obtained for the new septic. Perk test performed on three twenty-one twenty-one, so final designs may still be in process. Since the property will have more than eight rooms, designer must use the following underlying section of Title V bedroom definition when calculating design, and he gave what the specifications are. It appears that there are ten to eleven rooms in the house. Had difficulty determining whether the two rooms in the lower level are mechanical or habitable. Therefore, the applicant would be looking at a five-bedroom septic system. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. No comment from the assessors. And I would just make a note, we can check with Concom, but their referral to us mentioned an attached garage, but for some reason doesn't mention a detached. There are, is a letter in support from a James Ware, ninety East Bear Hill Road, Harvard, Mass. Please see the attached letter in support. To the members of zoning board, I'm writing in favor of the proposed plans by James. And Lisa Mooney, to construct a new house, garage, and pool, and to reconstruct the bathhouse at one eighty-eight Gansett Road, I urge the members of the board to give their approval for the plans. My family had owned the house and grounds of one eighty-eight Gansett Road for over ninety years, and would continue to own the land both to the north of this property, one ninety-two Gansett Road, owned by James Ware and Sharon McCarthy, and to the south of the property, one eighty-six Gansett Road, owned by Marion Ware and Mark Louizelle. After our sale of one eighty-eight Gansett Road to the Moonies last year, they have kept me informed of their plans, and I am in full agreement with their ideas and concepts. They're keeping some of the same features that are shown in the bathhouse and in designing a house, garage, and grounds that will fit well in the surrounding landscape. The current main house and bathhouse were built in nineteen twenties, are in need of substantial repair. The main house still has ninety-year-old plumbing, electrical wiring, and fuse boxes, so it makes total sense to replace the house, which will allow the Mooney family to thoroughly enjoy it for the next hundred years, as we have done for the last ninety-three. A garage with living quarters makes sense and is in keeping with the many houses on Gansett Road. We are fully supportive of this change. The bathhouse has been part of this property for the entire ninety-plus years and has survived hurricanes in nineteen thirty-eight, nineteen forty-four, nineteen fifty-four Carol, nineteen sixty Donna, and nineteen ninety-one Bob, as well as numerous other storms over the years. But it has suffered from the storms and has occasionally been partly underwater as it still has much of the same roof and floor joists that it had for those ninety years. It would be important to make substantial renovations to ensure it survives future storms. I hope you will consider their project favorable and give your approval. And then there was a letter from Marion Ware and Mark Louizelle. Zoning Board of Appeals, we're writing in favor of James and Lisa Mooney's plan to raise the large house at one eighty-eight Gansett. We are the owners of one eighty-six Gansett, which abuts the property. The Moonies have presented a plan, which is well-designed house with a pool and cabana which fits well within the property. They also plan to restore the bathhouse, which is situated down near the harbor. We approve of both construction plans. We also think it is an idea whose time has come to tear down the main house. The house was owned by many, by my family for over ninety years. Electric and plumbing are totally antiquated and in severe decay. It'd be extremely difficult and expensive to bring them up to code. Although I have a strong sentimental attachment to the mansion, I recognize the time has come to tear it down. It is no longer viable in this day and age. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Amen. Attorney Amen, welcome, and good to see you in person.
Well, it's a mutual feeling. It's fun to be here, and thank you for what you've done over the past year and for your service today. I would just like to clarify which is the five-member board that's...
Sure, and I got ahead of myself there, thank you, Attorney Amen. So, voting members, since Scott is here, voting members will be Bob, myself, Ken, Scott, and I'll give this one to...
Might I suggest since, well, unless you expect, you expect us to make a decision tonight?
Let's suspect.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, we'll give it to James, and Mary will be on the next one, how's that? All right?
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to...
Even if we don't, Mary will, she's present, so she'd be able to vote. Sorry, go ahead, Attorney Amen.
I'd like to thank Ashley DeMello for her help in making me look like I know what I'm doing by, with these presentations and helping to load this into your system. This special permit concerns one of the many, many properties in Falmouth that are unique and special. And this is right there with them. The property is, as you can see, outlined in yellow, just about at the end of Gansett Point. Quisset Harbor is on one side to the east of the property, and Buzzards Bay is to the west. The house in question was built in nineteen twenty-five. It's a summer house. It has more than seventeen thousand square feet of space, close to nine thousand square feet of finished space, some twelve bedrooms, and it's in terrible condition. The historical commission agreed that it was impractical to try to rebuild it and agreed that in its certificate of appropriateness that it could be removed. And the historical commission has approved the plans that are before you tonight. And speaking of the plans, I should recognize that a Hutcher Associates of Falmouth, Hutcher Architects rather, designed the house. Charles Orr, one of the architects at Hutcher's, is here. And also here is Mike McGrath of Holmes and McGrath, whose firm has done the site plans that you'll see. So, this portion of the assessors' map shows the location of the property. This is an aerial photograph from the town that shows the house that would be torn down. A notice to the right in the picture is the existing pier that's probably as old as that house and is licensed by the state. And at the landward edge of that pier, there is what's called a boathouse. There aren't any boats in it. It's really a boating house, it's a place to keep life jackets and supplies. There are some changing rooms, there's water service to it. And it's a pretty, pretty much in disrepair inside it. And the intention is to replace, reconstruct it as needed. It may be possible that some of the structure can be used. Windows would be replaced, the siding and so on. But we don't know yet whether any of the structure can be salvaged. So, since it's an accessory structure, we're asking for permission to reconstruct it just as it is. It is a historic thing, it's a wonderful feature on the harbor. This is just a picture of the land court stamped plan that the planning board endorsed that combined this property with a separate vacant two-acre parcel that could have been a second house. The two lots were merged to create a single, a four-acre lot. You can see that the existing house is non-conforming because it is right up to the property line where it touches, has in the past been connected to the house that's on lot ninety-one. But the houses have been on separate lots since at least nineteen seventy-four. Going to show you first the site plan that shows what's going to go on, on the lot. You see, there's the main, the new house. There's a swimming pool and a cabana to the west. There's a proposed two-car garage with living space above it in this area. And it's between the house and the street that runs through the lot. And it's a very unusual situation to have a plan that has been endorsed now in nineteen seventy-four and again in nineteen eighty-eight, and again in two thousand and twenty by the planning board using the way that runs through a lot as the frontage. But the land court has accepted that, and that's been the situation for many, many, many years. The subdivision was laid out in nineteen twenty. So, we're here for a special permit, not so much because of the house, because the new house, unlike the existing house, will be conforming with respect to setbacks. In fact, it will be twenty feet from the property line because that's a requirement in the Gansett neighborhood. It's also a house that's, though of good size, is substantially smaller than the existing house. But the garage is, as I said, between the house and the street. That would make it being in a front yard. It's fifty-seven feet away from the street. The zoning bylaw allows an accessory structure in a front yard, not closer to the street than fifty feet, provided that the zoning board of appeals grants a special permit. So, that's what really got us thinking we needed a special permit or should get one for a project like this before we start construction. And then, we also realized, well, we are, or may reconstruct this boathouse. It is an accessory structure, and reconstructing an accessory structure requires a special permit, so we've added that to the, to the application. Now, let me go back to, quickly, to that rendering of the, of the house. It's going to be a magnificent set of structures. It's broken up into smaller pieces to reduce the impact of it and to evoke the idea of a farm with multiple farm structures. The structures you see, except for the garage in this photo, they are all connected, but they appear from this angle almost as if they're separate structures. This building to the ridge is going to be a little less than twenty-nine feet tall. The existing house is thirty-five feet tall. So, this is actually smaller also in height. So, we have two things really to talk about, the so-called boathouse or bathhouse and the garage. So, just because it's in the order that we have them here, let's talk about this little structure. That's the boathouse looking towards the water. Maybe you've been to the site, maybe you've even looked inside it, and you would know it's in poor condition. would know it's in poor condition. The proposal, um, is outlined, um, on these plans, which are annotated and just say there will be new shingles, uh, new windows, uh, new trim detail to match the existing. The only change in appearance, uh, that's, uh, required is that, uh, that railing, uh, on the roof deck, uh, needs to be modified a little bit, um, in order to comply with, uh, today's, uh, safety codes, building codes. And that may actually be, uh, taken care of by putting a, um, a Plexiglas, um, or, or glass, uh, barrier on one side of it just to, um, just for safety purposes. And I think maybe, uh, it's going to be slightly higher, again, just to meet code and that's the only reason for that change. Um, so there isn't too much to that. I don't think you'll have any problem with the reconstruction of, of this, um, rather interesting and very attractive boathouse. That's a view of it from the water. So, the, the garage, um, in the front yard. It's a two-car garage, not oversized. On the first floor and the second floor, there is a guest bedroom, um, a guest bathroom in a little area, uh, tucked over in this area for, uh, could be a pantry. Uh, but this is not, uh, intended to be, uh, any kind of an apartment. Um, if that's what the owner wanted, we would have applied for an accessory apartment. Um, he just wants a guest house. Uh, so that's what's inside, uh, the building. That's the exterior of it. Um, we made the height of it just a little bit below twenty-two feet because that's what's allowed by right. It's, uh, twenty-one feet, eleven and a half inches. Twenty-two feet high is, as I said, allowed by right, but on a lot of two acres or more, you can get a special permit to be up to twenty-five feet high. Uh, we thought it was easier just to, uh, make it, uh, conform without needing, uh, to add that to our special permit requests. Uh, the materials would be, uh, matching the, uh, the house. So, that's what we're proposing, um, is the, um, as you know from the letters, the neighbors are in favor of it, including, uh, um, the wares who will travel through, uh, this property on their right-of-way, um, they're in, in favor of it. There's simply no adverse impacts whatsoever that would outweigh, um, the benefits of approving this. We're going to be replacing a failed, um, uh, series of cesspools for septic with a Title V system. The whole project has now been approved with the issuance of an order of conditions by the, uh, Conservation Commission. The septic permit has already been issued by the, um, Board of Health and, um, again, as you know, the, uh, Historical Commission has approved, um, these, these plans. We spent a lot of time in the past, uh, weeks talking to the water department about, uh, their referral. Uh, they wanted to have a separate service, uh, to the, uh, house and the, uh, plans were revised and these plans that, uh, you've received do show, um, uh, the separate service running right in here, uh, to the garage. They wanted a separate service to the garage. And there is a, uh, email, uh, to the board received, um, by the board that, uh, from the water department that says their concerns, um, have been addressed. Uh, I think I'll stop, uh, because, uh, I don't think you need more, um, to approve this project, um, but, uh, either I or McGrath or Orr will be happy to, uh, answer any questions that you, uh, might have.
Sounds good. Thank you, Attorney Omen. We'll see if we do have any questions. James, do you want to start us off?
No, it looks like a very nice project. They don't have any questions.
Very good. Scott?
Um, just a couple. Uh, the pool, did, did you mention whether it was salt or, or freshwater pool?
I actually don't know, but I bet, uh, Charles or not.
It'll be a freshwater.
Okay. So, I'm imagining that the, uh, the drainage facility that's, uh, that's twelve feet deep because it's gravity drained, that's why it's so deep over there? Thank you, Ms. James. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ken?
Yes, so Bob, you mentioned there's a pantry in, in the, uh, garage. Is, is there a cooking facility there or is it just...
Uh, there, I don't think there are plans, uh, for it, whether it be a coffee maker, that type of thing. Uh, I would imagine there will be. It will not be used as any kind of an apartment as a, as a residence. It's for the comfort of the guests. Um, and the board can certainly, um, feel comfortable from our point of view in, uh, putting a, a restriction, uh, that it not be used as a separate dwelling unit. I don't think it's necessary because you'll have that in your decision and then the decision will be recorded at the registry deeds, but if you wanted to have a covenant recorded, we'd be happy to, uh, provide that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Bob?
Uh, no, no specific questions, just, just regarding, um, just for clarification for the Concom. So, they mentioned that it was an atta-, there was an attached garage and they didn't mention the detached. Is that just a typo?
Um, a good catch. We didn't catch that.
Okay.
If it refers to, uh, you know, we could have attached the garage and then there wouldn't have been a need for the special permit on account of that.
But the plan that they reviewed had the detached garage.
It's, it's a detached garage.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. Mary?
No questions.
Okay. And my issues were already addressed, so public comment. Any question, comments, or concerns from any members of the public out there tonight? All right. Not seeing any. Back to the board.
I did have one other. I, I realize it's not so much a zoning issue, but, um, what is the provision for fencing the pool for safety purposes?
It'll be covered. It'll be covered.
So, it'll have a fence enclosure?
Um, from what I understand from Dan Serene, who's the landscape architect, covering, does not require, if you cover your pool, it does not require...
When not in use? I mean, uh, what does that mean?
I guess I'd have to refer, because I don't know exactly what the rule is. I'm sorry.
My name is Mike McGrath. I permit pools all the time or I draw, uh, pools. Basically, you can buy a pool today that basically has a cover and so if it's not in use, the cover, uh, you close the pool and the cover's supposed to be strong enough that tots, small children don't fall for it.
What about large children?
I won't go there because I'll say the politically wrong thing.
All right. Anything else, Ken?
No, that's it.
Or anything else from any other members?
I have a body and a share.
Go ahead, James.
Not going to affect my support. Just curious, is there any plan to reclaim any of the old materials in the house with the new one?
Um, well, Charles could speak to that, but I know the answer is, is, uh, is yes. Um, some of the, um, flooring, uh, mantles.
Um, primarily the wood, the woodwork. If we, we're going to have to investigate and see where it condition itself, but whatever flooring you can keep, we can break this wide plank line that you can, you can add there if you want. So, we're going to try to save that. But all of the fixtures and whatever pins you, which are, um, salvaged from, um, there's a company in Falmouth here locally that comes in and reclaims materials, so we're going to have them come through the door.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the board?
I have one more. Just, just to dig into that, that pool cover just a little bit, is there anything in writing that, that protects that, that safety measure? I mean, or is it just a theory somebody's having? I've never heard that before, once.
Well, there has, I'm, I'm not familiar with it. Obviously, we have to meet the state building code.
Right.
And it should be part of, uh, any permitting. And, and of course, for, once specified...
So, you'd have no, uh, uh, objection, have some kind of clarification in the decision that there would have to be some, some kind of language from, from, uh, uh, an authority, the building, uh, department that would support the theory on, on the safety of the cover?
I don't mind that. Or the other thing we can do is, uh, I, I think the board's probably prepared to vote this tonight. You can vote it. It won't be, uh, filed.
Yeah, I'm not trying to hold you up. I just want to get some more specificity on it.
This seems to be the, this seems to be the type of thing, uh, that a knowledgeable, someone more knowledgeable about it than I am ought to be able to get this, an answer on it and just, uh, give it to Noreen very quickly.
Pool must comply. Would state co-, building code be sufficient?
Works for me.
I'd say so.
Works for me.
It's up, it's up to the building commission anyway, so...
Certainly, I'm stating your concern.
Yep. I'd be happy with that. Anything else from the board?
No, I guess, I, so I assume they'll also reclaim all the copper. It's the first house I've ever seen with copper screens.
That's a good question.
I mean, all the screens on, on the upper floors are, I've just never seen copper screens before. All the downspouts are copper. The entire roofline is lined with it.
That's the way they made it.
I just, I just, I was, I was just sitting there adding up the... There's a lot of copper there. It's beautiful.
You're on television and, and a lot of people are listening to you.
Just leave it at that then, huh? All right.
There is a caretaker, however.
He's washing out for that coffee.
There you go.
There's also more.
All right. Anyone like to make a motion to close the hearing then?
Oh, so moved?
Second.
All right. Motion made by Scott to close and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes. This is unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony. May be taken. All right. What would be the board's pleasure?
Some motion to approve of conditions.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve of conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Findings?
Uh, two forty sixty-eight A eight, two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more. A detrimental, um, existing house has been existed since nineteen twenty-five and it's just, uh, lasted its sustainability, uh, and they need to do upgrade, they need to raise it. They can't salvage it. Original house was eleven bedrooms. We're going to be reducing that to five. There was a two-car detached garage, uh, proposed with living space above, but property will still be single-family property.
Upgraded septic system, Bob?
Upgraded septic system. The new house will conform to the setbacks and in the Gansett, uh, community, that's twenty feet.
Did you say setback?
Yeah, on the setbacks.
Setback.
And those will be twenty feet.
Stated that it was a detached garage.
It was a detached. We should, um, list the, the heights for the boathouse or bathhouse or if they can refer it.
No habitable.
Yeah, no habitable space and also that, that dock is leased land.
Upgrade on the pier, pier house?
Yeah, upgrade on it, which is the boathouse or bathhouse. And I don't know how you want to refer to it, Noreen. It's, it's referred both ways, so maybe just put a hyphenation on the... Our testimony also is that, um, they are going to try to reclaim materials in the home. We have a, uh, certificate of appropriateness from Historical Commission and that is dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. We have an order of conditions and mitigation with, uh, Conservation Department. Uh, two letters of support, both butters, which, uh, also had, uh, connections to the area. It was their family that owned the original, uh, home. Uh, make a finding that the pool, uh, was going to have a cover installed, uh, to meet safety codes, but the pool will have to meet whatever the safety requirements are for the town and the state.
Without the spy would be encompassed with that pool, that pool, um, note.
Yeah, and we'll, we can condition that so it meets it on the pool.
New water service?
New water service for the, uh, so there'll be separate water services, one for the house and one for the detached garage with the living space above.
Interesting.
Yeah, they'll have to address it. I mean, we can put in the conditions, that's section ninety-nine. They didn't suggest in here what the addresses are, so whatever they usually suggest the address.
All right. That does it for findings, conditions?
How about both of the immediate butters, filed letters of support?
Yeah, we have that.
My apologies.
No, it's always good to double check.
Good.
Uh, findings per plans. Uh, it'll be a five-bedroom, uh, single-family property. For the five-bedroom proof septic system, uh, there will be, uh, living space above the garage, uh, condition that that not be, um...
There we go.
Yeah, a, uh, an apartment. Also condition that the property stays as a single-family property. A condition that the, the pool meet the safety requirements for the state and the We should put in the findings that it's a four-acre parcel.
Times, construction times.
Yeah.
There's nobody around them.
Yeah, it's just, it's actually, it's the two neighbors, so...
Oh, yeah, and they're full support.
They're both for it, so I don't think we need to...
I withdraw.
The construction hours and they seem...
And there's plenty of room for...
I mean, they're constructing one out there now and you don't need to worry.
Plenty of room for that. Yep.
Man, I bet you there'd be a lot of process.
Uh, condition that, uh, every, other referrals, that it meet Concom, water department, the engineering comments, section ninety-nine-one for fixing numbers. Uh, we don't have the, uh, we do have Concom in the plan, just not the... Uh, just put in the finding that, that the Concom referral mentioned a attached garage versus a detached, which we assume was a typo.
Now, with the boathouse, if it is, it need to be reconstructed, you want us to maintain the same footprint?
Same footprint and also the same restriction on the boathouse. It's not, it's not going to have, uh, habitable space.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
No, it's a great property up there.
Beautiful. All right, so if that does it with findings and conditions, that was a motion made by Bob, seconded by Scott to approve with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is unanimously. Attorney Omen, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for taking it up and finishing it.
Thank you very much.
It's a shame that you're breaking it up.
All right. Up next, we have application thirty-eight dash twenty-one, Scarduzio Trustee, one ninety-two, Meadow Neck Road in East Falmouth.
Do you, do you want to take, um, what we took out of, because they're here. They've been waiting for this.
It's all, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so let's go the...
Yeah. You know what? My apologies. Well, because Scott's here and I said that we would take up, uh, the continuation once Scott came, uh, so we'll take out...
Some motion to take application fifty dash twenty, Villages at Brick Hill, LLC.
All right, so, oh, do we need the motion because I...
Well, we took it out of order, so...
Yeah.
It doesn't need to be seen.
Yeah, motion to take up application fifty dash twenty, Village at Brick Hill, LLC, five-eleven Brick Hill Road in West Falmouth. Voting members on this are myself, Ken, Bob, and Scott.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
All right.
You may want to note it and it's not good to see me, but...
Right, so, right, so we, we did run into that quorum issue earlier, Attorney Glenn, and I'm just getting this all...
I, I couldn't hear.
Oh, sure. I'm just getting this all on the record at the moment. We did run into that quorum issue earlier in the evening. Scott has arrived, uh, but Ed, uh, is not in attendance tonight in the, if, in the future, uh, Ed would have to submit material saying under that, under the Mullen Rule that he's reviewed everything.
Okay.
And he'd be able to vote on the project, so...
And just for the record, I had missed a meeting and I have reviewed all the videotapes and information on the meeting, so I will be taking advantage of the Mullen Rule.
All right. And as we know, Ken is...
I will not be, uh...
Ken won't be here in the future, so you're looking at myself, Bob, Ed, and Scott. Uh, I suppo-, if we have to have a full, a full five voting members, we could go back into the records and just make sure that Mary and James have contributed and have been in attendance.
I think they've both been at all the hearings.
I think, I think they have, but I, I just want to get it all out there right now on the record so everyone understands going forward.
I think Ashley thought James may have missed one.
May have missed one.
So, he would be eligible to review that.
All right, so he would be eligible for the Mullen Rule as well in the event that he did miss, uh, miss a hearing.
Good old Mullen Rule.
Right? Come in to save us for this one. All right, so now...
So, I, I appreciate the explanation and clarification there, yeah. So, begin?
Go ahead, Attorney Glenn.
Okay, all right. My name is... My name is Paul Glenn, I'm here for the applicant, village at Brick Hill Road, it's a forty-B application for twenty-eight or four, originally for thirty-two affordable homes, and now twenty-eight total homes. This is our fifth meeting that we had, the last meeting, we were here May sixth, I talked about at that meeting, the location and the density, and how it fit into the, the town's requirements for affordable housing, both for density and location. Talked about what a great job Mike Bocelli has done presenting all this information, there's a lot of detail, and how hard Mike Solamando, the applicant, worked with the neighbor, there's only one neighbor really, to work out, to make sure that they were satisfied with the, with that. Last meeting, the peer review person, Brian Ergation, was here, he submitted a detailed report on the plan, and Mike Bocelli has worked with Walter Herman and Hermanow, I think we pronounce it, to, as Michael says, and he'll be happy to go over it, he's answered every issue that Brian raised in his memo of May sixth. Mike has submitted, Mike Bocelli has submitted revised plans that deal with each one of Brian's concerns. One concern that Brian felt that he wasn't qualified to talk about was the, was, one was the stormwater drainage system, and that's why we had Walter Hermanow. Two things, he didn't, Walter Hermanow is, submitted a stormwater drainage system plan, and he feels that he has answered all of the issues. When we heard that Brian couldn't be here tonight, we decided not to have Walter come down from the Boston area to come tonight either, but he has submitted a report to you that answers all of Brian's, the peer review pers, engineer, all of his issues that he raised in his May sixth letter to us. Another issue was raised about the water pressure in the area, and the applicant, Mike Solamando, just, by the way, he's a civil engineer, he's man of many talents, he's here tonight. You left your dog at home. You left your dog at home, I think we're gonna miss the dog, actually, from making a special appearance there, but Mike has talked to four fire departments, and he hired a company to go determine what the water pressure is up at the site, and Mike would like to make that presentation tonight to you, if you have any questions about that. He submitted the report from wind companies, I think it is, that, that looked into the water pressure there, and he submitted his own memo along with it, so might have that. Now, another, I, I think we're answering everything that was brought up at the last one, another issue that was brought up by a couple of members was the, a second access to the property, and the new plan shows on that, that where a second access could be, about four hundred feet from the street, and about four hundred feet from the end of the, the end of the development, and I submitted a letter to the board where I said the applicant would be happy to accept a condition where he would be required to grant an emergency access to any development to the east of him, that now is being contemplated by the, by the YMCA, where they could, where they would have an emergency access over the village at Brick Hill, and suggested to you that if you put a similar condition on anything the Y did, that they would grant village at Brick Hill an emergency access, it would seem to be, it would seem to be a good relationship to, for both, for both properties there. And, and that's something that can be easily accomplished by Michael, when he feeds out the properties, just reserving the right to grant easements to abutting properties there, that, that would be easy to accomplish. I'm here, I, I'm not sure, would you like to start with Mike Bocelli to answer, to tell you the questions that he answered? We don't have Brian here tonight to agree or disagree with whether Michael answered all the questions the way he's gonna say he did, and then we have Mike Solamando, the applicant, that would be happy to talk to you about the, the water pressure. Okay, do you have a preference?
All right, I guess we can hear from Mr. Bocelli first.
Mr. Bocelli.
Good evening, for the record, Mike Bocelli, Falmouth Engineering, I represent the applicant. I think you've reviewed the drawings in, in detail at the previous hearings, and at the May sixth hearing, the peer review engineer's deficiency letter had limited the final comments to a handful of things that we addressed, most of which were calculations that he wanted to review for the septic system. So the calculations for the septic systems were submitted, so that he could review them and check them. We made some minor changes to drainage, piping systems that he commented on, so over the course of the five hearings, and I think there were three different reviews from Mr. Ergation, we addressed every issue that he raised, between myself and Walter Hermanow. I've, I've never drawn a more detailed, comprehensive plan in my career. We're a small firm, and on some level, it was nice to have another set of eyes, and Mr. Ergation to look over all my design, so I, I think we've satisfied him. We, we submitted the plans, I think, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, so it was like nine days prior to tonight. So I'm, I stand by, and I expect that Mr. Ergation will be satisfied when he does have a chance to review the most recent revised plans. So there really isn't a lot of more I can tell you about the plan changes, but you've seen them all, other than technical aspects that I didn't, I wouldn't wanna bog you down with tonight, unless you have specific questions.
All right, let's, let's see if anyone does have any specific questions for you. James, anything?
Scott.
I just have one about the water, I guess I'll wait for Mr. Solamando to come up.
Oh, wait, waiting for him?
Well, he's the one that's gonna answer the, the water question, the pressure questions, I guess.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wait for, yeah, we'll wait for him.
But I do have a question.
All right, Ken?
No, well, I guess the only thing that, I don't recall if it was addressed, the wildlife quarter.
Is, we're not proposing any wildlife quarters, and I believe Mr. Glenn asked for waivers from that. The, the entire property is surrounded on all sides, with the exception of the Christ Lutheran Church to the east, by open space, so there's woodland surrounding the entire property, so there's no, there were no provisions within this specific lot to allow for a wildlife quarter.
So that is a specific waiver.
One thing I could point out, since I'm, I'm here, just to clarify, the, it was a concern about emergency access, because the cul-de-sac is longer than five hundred feet, a waiver was requested, but as a mitigation measure, we had the opportunity to provide through this section of the development, a twenty-foot wide water main easement, which also will serve as a linkage to the land owned by the Christ Lutheran Church, it would be graded, and in a way that it would satisfy emergency access for the fire department, it could be the width that they require as a gravel road, and it's in a place that then, in that position, from Brick Hill to it is about four hundred feet, and from it to the cul-de-sac is just under five hundred feet, so if that were utilized, then there's no place on this roadway that would be more than five hundred feet.
Anything else, Ken?
No.
All right, Bob?
No, I just wanna know about emergency access, but it's good solution.
Mary?
I have no question.
All right, and no questions from me, so, I think we're all set with Mr. Bocelli, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mike Solamando, I'm the applicant, and I wondered if everybody got the memo that I sent?
We did.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, well, there was, you know, there were some concerns that were set out with the, with the, the pressure of the water, and what I did was, we, I hired Wind Water, Cape Cod Wind Water, and they went out and on five, five twenty-five twenty-one, got to the flow and pressure test at four eighty-five Brick Hill Road, which is right across the street from the project, and the hydrotest, I, I sent you a sample of it, or a copy of it, and the test results were the static pressure was at sixty-nine, and the residual pressure was at fifty-nine, that's when they opened the valve afterwards, and, and let the water flow, that's how much it drops, and it drops down to fifty-nine. Okay, that's a pressure drop of about fourteen point five percent, okay, and the gallons per minute, per minute were measured about one thousand one hundred and ten PSI. So the following week, I, I got the results, and then I, I called the Falmouth Fire Department, and I, you know, and what we did was, they were kind enough, one of the deputy chiefs called me back, and, and we discussed it, and then I, and I, you know, and I told them the results, and first of all, if we looked into the hydro, well, they said that's a green hydrant, so, you know, you go up in the NFPA, all right, and the NFPA is, and I not only spoke with, I not only spoke with the, with the Falmouth Fire Department, I done a lot of work in Quincy, the city of Quincy, I talked to them, now their parameters are a little bit different, because they have high rises, and, and, you know, they're a whole lot densely more packed, and the buildings are higher, their pressures, but their pressure requ, needs are much greater, but I also talked with the, with Situate, who has, would be, would love to have what we have down here in Falmouth, and, and Marshfield, they all kinda had the same general consensus, but NFPA and their standards, so it's mostly a wish list, or, or what we, they'd like to have as an optimum, is, but not every town meets all their requirements, but in this particular case, according to the deputy chief, okay, here in Falmouth, this section of Falmouth is, is got some of the best pressure in town, and we have, the pressure in the town was, the pressure there, this particular green hydrant, was one thousand one hundred and ten pounds, okay? That's, that's good, if you look on, according to NFPA, I don't want to go with all these numbers and stuff, but NFPA one, NFPA one oh one, and NFPA two ninety-one, okay? That's a, that's a good hydrant, or that's, that's good pressure, excellent pressure would be fifteen hundred, but it's good enough for the, for the green hydrant. And then, when we look at this, the, the static pressure is at, it's sixty-nine, the drop to fifty-nine, well, there's, if it goes below twenty PSI, then you have some, we have some problems with contamination, or, or there's an issue that can be brought up with contamination. We're well in excess of that, of the twenty percent, and what I did was, I, I copied those, those sections, and I sent them to you, and kinda like circled some of those things that, so you guys could sit, have a look through it, the NFPA is, is pretty long. I also, at another point found, but I did not send this one to you, under section eighteen, four point four, four point four five one dash two, okay, I know it's, that a thousand gallons, you know, is, is what their, is what their standard is for, a thousand gallons per minute is what their standard pressure for homes under five, under five thousand square feet, which all these homes are. So, I mean, we looked into it, according to, you know, according to the deputy fire chief here, again, it's some of the best, best pressure in town. Scott, did you have any other?
See if we do have any questions, I'll start from this side, Mary?
No questions.
No, and not on the fire suppression, I just have one question, I know you're gonna do an allotment for landscaping, per houses, but could we get any kind of an idea of what the minimum would be required for them to do with that allotment?
Well.
Like, so many trees, so many.
Well, we get, for, outside the allotment, I put, I'm putting the trees in, there's gonna be at least one, you know.
Okay, I just, just, just so we have a better and easier way when we're doing the decisions, so we know exactly what's.
Yeah.
Being put in for landscaping, on, you know, some of these projects, I'm sure you would do it this way, but some of them present really well on these plans on paper, and then they're built, and we think, oh no, we should have put something in there, because we're not even getting the minimum that we thought we're getting, so if we can just get some kind of an idea what the minimum requirement will be on these properties.
Sure. All right. Well, I, we gave a little, I gave, you know, the blow up, those first two, maybe, is it four?
Yeah, that'd be great, if you could just.
You know, and, and shame on me, because I said that I would bring it to you, I think during one of the, one of the meetings that we had.
Yeah, I just.
And, and I didn't, and, and I can send you pictures of.
If you could just send something, that'd be great, give us a better idea.
Here we've been before, it's like we have footsteps in the snow, I know, use that analogy, you can see what we've done by looking at the last project that we've done, but I, I'm kinda like, this is kinda like.
This, this was submitted, just so you know, and there's a concept plant schedule with a key and a legend?
Yeah, so I, so I know that, but I, so on the, because it says concept plan schedule, that's what we've got into a lot, is that they show up on a concept plan, and then they don't show up on an actual plan, and then the answer is, well, that was a concept plan, we don't, we're not held to a concept plan, so I was just looking for some kind of minimal of what's actually going to show up on the plan. You know, I'm sure it's gonna look great, I just, I've learned from my mistakes in the past with these on landscaping, and I've been burnt so many times that.
No, I understand, I, I know.
So even if it's just a minimal of what, you can always go over that, but minimally, you know, a couple trees per lot, and some shrubs, or.
Certainly, a, a condition that requires that, it would be acceptable.
Well, I'm happy to do that, I just, if you could let us know what the minimum is, then we can just condition on what that minimum, you can always go over it, but.
Some, some memo we submitted in one of the meetings, and I forget which, you know, second, third, fourth, we said that he'd spend a minimum of five thousand dollars in landscaping per home.
Yeah, so if we can just get, and it's, it's easy to say figures, if we can just get what that would probably bake, break down to minimally per home, like two trees, some bushes, you don't have to be specific.
I'll have to get it to you.
Yeah, you don't have to be specific on the type, but just, we know we get, you know, six-foot trees and some large shrubs.
And not do it, I can't do it.
No, that's fine, you could submit it, I just, it would really help if you could just send something over there.
I think the problem, sorry to interject.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Is that when the projects are developed, and you're gonna sell these as individual lots, correct? So, you know, someone will go out and inspect, and look at the building that's put up, and then they're gonna check the landscaping that should match the plan, and if they don't have a plan, they don't have anything to compare to. So even though you may give someone an allotment, there should be certain standard installations that you're going to do throughout the development, so that when someone goes out and checks, we can be assured that those minimum plants will be in there.
We can do that, and it'd be more than minimal, but you wouldn't be so specific. We can do that, and it'd be more than minimal, but you wouldn't be so specific that you have to have a rhododendron, a hydrangea, because some people like one...
No, but if you could break it down, you know, five-foot tree, three-foot bush, I mean, I don't really care what the types are, I just...
Figure it out.
Just something, something quantitative.
You know, we've seen a lot of these, and, and the plans are that there's trees, and then you end up going out, and there's these little one-foot bushes, and we're told we can't do anything, because it was concept plan. And I just, I just don't want to get hit by that again on, on these larger projects, and I'm sure you want to make it look nice anyways, so...
You've got, I mean, it's, it's in my, my best interest. I know...
We just don't always see, we just don't always see it, so...
You've got to, but if I got to sell the next house, I got to make sure that one with the buyer next to it looks good. You got to, you got to make it right.
Oh, I would love this to be a project that we can use and say, "This is how you do it," so, so anything you can...
What we'll do, give you that, and show you where I've been. That's the best I can do.
That's great, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions from the board? Scott?
Yeah, I have, I have my water question.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. You said you were at 69 at, at the hydrant?
Yes.
With Wind Water, right?
Right.
And when they opened up, it dropped to 59 immediately?
Yeah.
Okay, so, do you have a calculation over the distance? Do you have pressure at the distance of where, was that a calculated distance to your first hydrant?
Do you have the, do you have the printout of the...
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, is that a, did the, Falmouth, when you discussed this with the Falmouth Assistant Chief?
Yes.
Was he satisfied with, with...
Yes, by NFPA, 25 is acceptable.
So, so we have documentation from him about that conversation, that he was satisfied with it?
No, he just called, no. No. I, I didn't know. I don't have a written conversation with him, no. But I checked with, not just him, I checked with...
To be honest with you, I don't care about other towns, I mean...
Oh, I understand, but I just wanted to get a general consensus, just so I, I knew that when I got up here and I would be speaking to you, that I'd have at least not one authority, but several authorities.
Yeah, I understand. And, and my, my major concern with it is, it's so dense in that neighborhood, that if you have more than one houses, that, that become on fire. I mean, you're going to need a lot of water for houses that are little feet away from each other. I just want to make sure the water pressure. We have documentation that he's satisfied with, with all of that.
Well, it's supposedly one of the better areas in town.
I don't like words like supposedly, but, yeah, okay.
Well, I was taking, I was taking his, I was taking his word for it.
It seems like if we now, he now has access to these pressure test results, we could ask him to comment.
Absolutely. I don't think it's a big deal to ask.
To get a comment directly.
We can get confirmation from the fire and the water suppression.
Sure, that works.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions from anyone else? Mary, anything? No? All right. Mr. Solomando, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just because I have to say it, but, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns? I know that everyone else out here is either part of this project or the next one coming up. No? All right, back to the board.
So what, how much more do we need on this?
Well, the, I guess the biggest issue we have tonight was that the peer engineer isn't finished reviewing the stuff that was submitted. So they asked some of it, but they said that they would, it would take them about a week, I think, is, is that what his letter said, no, in a week?
I think so.
And then he'd have to present to us.
You want that, and you want some minimal landscape, definitive, minimal landscape information?
And then were there some perimeter trees that you were going to protect in certain areas?
I, I don't, if you refer back to like, my letter of February 9th...
Sorry, Mr. Solomando, if you could speak at the microphone. That's something I'm sure FCTV will lecture me on, because we're in person now.
He's in the hall.
There's, you know, we're going to, we're going to stake it. I, I wish we could. I tried to look for a place, because, but the places where I thought we could save some of it, around house number 21, there may be some that we can, that we can save. But the trouble is the, the grading. When you rip up, when you, when we have to transfer and do the grading, we're going to, we're going to kill some of these roots. And if we, if I refer back to February, February 9th letter, you know, and it's only through my experience that I'm telling you, you folks this, on, on a site such as this. You know, I found in the past between roadways, utilities, electrical cables, gas, sewer, septic, road drainage, infiltration tanks, roof drainage galleys, along with foundations, water lines, driveways, root systems, you know, it, taking, you know, you try to save, but if, if you, if we leave some of these trees in, okay, trying to fit them in, all right, and try and save them, we're going to wreck the roots. They don't always go where you think they're going to go. And you're going to kill that tree. Doesn't die right away, may even, it may even bloom. But when you take it out with a crane, you, you can clear an acre for between 2,500 and 4,800 bucks a, an acre, when you forest the tree, when you're just clear cut, all right? But you're going to take one tree down, and that one tree, all right, when you have houses around with the crane and the manpower and everything else that you go with it, it costs just as much for one tree. And that's going to be on the homeowners. That's the only thing, that's the only reservation I have. I like to save trees. I, I'd save as much as I can, but Mike's got the grading in there, we have to keep to the grading to keep all the drainage, to keep up with the counts that we got. It's, I did it, and I, and I, and I learned to regret it. If I could, I would. I saved money. It makes sense. But I, it, it won't make sense if the tree dies.
Hopefully, everyone will opt in to your proposed landscaping plan, then.
I hope so.
I can highlight some areas on the site plan, I can just show that we do have an opportunity to save trees.
I was going to say, I mean, minimally where the town is in a butter to the property, and some of that land is in conservation, held by conservation.
Yes. We're off that anyway.
They, they will expect to probably walk the perimeter with their arborist to make sure that the, any trees that are on that property line are jointly owned by the town. So, you know, you're going to have to get permission from them.
We're going to cede in the property.
Yeah. If you look on the plan, we've, we've got a limit of work along the entire perimeter, it's highlighted in blue. And we've designed all of our regrading and our retaining walls such that they're inbound from the property line, a minimum of five feet in this case. And these proposed contours are inbound. So the trees that are on the common boundary will be sufficiently separated from any regrading to not be affected. We, we did that by design. And on the, on this side, on the north side, we were able to maintain the existing grades, so there's no regrading on, on this side. That's, and in this corner, these trees would be retained. And then over adjacent to the Donnellan family, all of this topography is unaltered, so there's a, there's a, a big area here along this common boundary that the trees can be retained.
So can you put in a limit of work that shows that those areas where trees are going to be preserved?
I, I am showing the limit of work on the plan as it is.
Does that count the, the root systems that Mr. Solomando talked about? I mean, if you've got root systems that are longer than two feet, that are on the property line, that are owned by the town, then aren't they subject to exactly what you were talking about?
Cutting, we're cutting inside the two-feet line. I didn't say we were grading with another five feet.
And then, in inventory of the trees, this is all scrub oak. There's, I mean, it's not, it's not like valuable woodland specimen trees out here. It's all, you know, six-inch to eight-inch scrub oak tree. So, there's nothing of...
You're talking about the town's trees, or...
All, all the trees, all over, all over this pro, you know, if you walked through this, you'd, it's, it's what you typically see in, in the woodlands around here. There's no, there's no large diameter trees.
Any other questions from the board? So I'm just, I'm just thinking, maybe we can condition the project, so you do have that walk with the town arborist around the perimeter, just to identify those trees? Okay. Anything else from the board?
No, just, maybe, nor we can get confirmation from the fire department, just on the figures that were done for the pressure test.
And the water suppression.
The suppression and the water suppression.
All right. So we will be looking at a continuance, Norine? I'm looking. It's an awfully full July schedule and into August that we have.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
The, the next meeting shouldn't be very long. You know, we'll, we'll get those things to you ahead of time. And the, and the peer review engineer won't have to comment about the arborist or the water pressure thing. So it, it could be a very short meeting before you, you close the hearing. And I, I'm in another committee, committee meeting on the 8th. I can't make that. Mr. Baselli cannot make it on the 15th. We're, I, I know it's a long shot, we're hoping for the 1st.
Right. We're also not meeting on the 15th. In the 1st, we have two continuations, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 new hearings.
We'd never make the 15th.
What's that?
It's too much than the 15th.
Yeah. No, I'm, I'm sorry, Attorney Glenn, you said this, you said you had a community meeting on the 8th?
The, and Mr. Baselli isn't available on the 15th, right? So...
That's a long, personal road's a lot, that's going to be a long meeting.
Right. We're also not meeting on the 15th.
We'd have to be after that.
It would.
Yeah.
I mean, really, the first date you have open is August 5th, because the other hearings, I mean, not to not get you on sooner, but there's so many cases those nights that you would be here till midnight.
I mean, it, it makes for an awfully long night, but could we notice this hearing for 6 o'clock, just to...
On which?
I, I'm just throwing it out there, any, any date, I guess.
I think the problem is, there's just too many other...
Yeah, there's, there's so much.
I mean, what happens, by the time we get to the end of the night, 11:30, I mean, even if we extend, I mean, at that point, you can hardly look at the plan. I think we have to go August.
Yeah. I'd hate to do it, but...
I mean, look at the schedule.
I, I know.
It just tells you everything you need to know by looking at it.
I, I've never seen our schedule go onto the second page like this.
Every single week.
We're, we're jam-packed.
You read, you did, Ken. Just in time.
Yes, you jumped the ship.
Summer, you notice he got off in the summer?
I mean, even, even the 29th's full, and then we'd be looking at the...
It's just, it's nothing to do with private scheduling, and then you have to, want to make sure Mr. Baselli's here, because we need him, and...
There's at least six every night.
Yeah, no, there is.
I think August is the best, unless there's a cancellation.
I think that's what we're looking at.
So what was the date, Norine, for August?
August 5th.
And it didn't even look that far ahead, but if my other meeting is August 5th, I'll get it continued to the, to the 12th, I guess, if, if we need to...
We could put that case on first, if that's helpful.
Oh, sure.
Folks are not waiting, and...
Yeah, Attorney Glenn, I've, in my, all my years on the board, I've never seen a schedule this bad.
And you're all volunteers. You know, I, any board you get involved with, I, I know everybody's giving their time to the town.
Especially during the summer, usually things slow down, but I mean, we are, we are jam-packed to figure out.
I'm not, I'm not praying for recession, but that's what would make the town a lot more quiet, wouldn't it? That'd be the bad way to, that'd be the wrong way to quiet things down.
Well, while we're on the topic, how are we looking in terms of deadlines? Do we need any sort of extension?
I, you'll...
Since we're going that far out?
Probably need to have an extension.
What do we hear? What was that?
They already... This is the big file.
Yeah.
Let's try to get it back.
On the front there?
I know where it is.
Sorry, Michael. 30 days.
You should probably get one signed anyways.
Yeah. Attorney Glenn, just out of an abundance of caution, I'm sure that you'd agree to signing any sort of extension that might be necessary. I, I can't tell at this very moment, but, okay.
I don't know what the new rules are after June 15th. You're back to the old, the new rules are the old rules after June 15?
I'm struggling with the same thing right now.
We're back to the old rules.
All right.
All right, so...
To be on the safe side, it's probably best, and at least in the meanwhile, we can make sure that if there's any outstanding issues, we get those resolved, so that we're done.
All right, so then I'll make a motion to continue to August 5th.
Second, Mr. Dugan's motion.
All right, thank you. So motion to continue to August 5th, made by Bob, and seconded by Scott. Voting members are myself, Ken, Bob, and Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Attorney Glenn, thank you to you and your team tonight. We will see you...
Thank you.
Unfortunately, August 5th. I wish we could have done something better.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Who knows? He may be at another committee, he may get to challenge again.
All right. Up next, we have application 38-21, Scarduzio trustee.
Pretty good selection.
192 Meadow Neck Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow an attached three-car garage exceeding 900 square feet in size. And for this application, the voting members will be Scott, Ken, myself, Bob, and Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Eric...
Sorry, we, we need to read everything into the record first, sorry.
I'm unfamiliar with the process.
So application 38-21, Thomas J. Scarduzio, trustee, 186 Meadow Neck Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-23G1 in B of the Code of Falmouth to allow an attached three-car garage exceeding 900 square feet in size on subject property known as 192 Meadow Neck Road, East Falmouth. For referrals. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. 192 Meadow Neck Road is a public right of way in this area. The applicant has an approved driveway permit unfilled, thus, 2021-8, and has filed the required bond. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from appropriate departments. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public right of way. Four, dry wells for the roof are included in the proposed project. Five, we recommend the following condition. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence pursuant to subsection 991, affixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance. The applicant has included the required erosion and sediment controls to protect the town right of way as shown in the figure below, taken from the driveway permit application. Where the project falls under the jurisdiction of CONCOM, we defer to the CONCOM for stormwater management, construction, erosion controls, for protection of the resource and buffer areas. CONCOM issued an order of conditions for the above referenced project dated 11/4/2020. I have inspected the limit of work for the property, have no further comments. The order of conditions is attached for the file. Planning board is no comment. Water, the existing water main must be in the plans as the service is. There is water available from the eight-inch main in Meadow Neck Road. The new water meter will be required to be installed in the proposed home. Health issued a permit for three-bedham septic on 3/8/21. Plans indicate a three-bedham home being proposed. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. And no letters for or against the concerns.
Very good. All right, and for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Eric Tolly from ERT Architects, representing the property owner, Tom Scarduzio. Before I begin, congratulations, Mr. Foreman. I'm a little jealous, I just retired from 25 years of community service, last 12 of which were as a selectman, and I barely got a handshake on the way out, so...
You must have did a good job.
That's what I tell my kids. If you're not making enemies, you're not doing anything. I'm here before you tonight to request a special permit, as indicated by Mr. Dugan, for a three, I'll call this a three-bay garage. I don't wanna call it a three-car garage because that's not what it is, per section 240-23 point G point one point B. In all honesty, when I was doing my pre-design research, zoning research for this property, when I came across this provision of the bylaw, the language reads garage space for more than two cars if. And I stopped right there because it was never the intent of the homeowner to have a three-car garage, but instead he wanted a two-car garage with room for the boat, which he now keeps at the end of the, at end of the road at the marina. So he'd like to be able to bring it home and, and put it in, in this structure. So, again, this, this was never intended to be a three-car garage. It was meant to be a two-car garage with boat storage. That was clearly indicated on the plans, but the building commissioner was not comfortable issuing that permit without receiving a special permit from this board first. So, here I am, asking for your consideration. I don't know if my, if the plans made it up there, but I'm old-fashioned. I have the, the paper copies, if any of you want to see them, if you don't have them in front of you. But I guess I'll stop and entertain questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Tully. And if I didn't already mention it, I think Mary's voting on this with the regular voting numbers. Mary, do you wanna start us off?
I have no questions.
Very good. Bob?
I have no question.
Ken?
So, is, I, I, I went out there, I saw, saw the foundation. Right now, it's excavated under the garage. Are you gonna fill it and put a slab in?
Yes.
So that was question number one. Question number two is there's, on the first floor, you have something called a clubhouse.
What the heck is that?
So the owner of this property is the owner of the property directly to the north. This is intended to be a guest house. There is a pickleball court as part of the project. And the clubhouse is an area for the owner and his companion are pickleball enthusiasts. So this is a place to gather with the friends, play pickleball, and be able to sit in the clubhouse and watch a pickleball match. I'm not a pickleballer. I don't have any idea how exciting the games are to watch. But, yeah, that, that first-floor clubhouse exits out onto a patio. The patio overlooks the pickleball court.
Okay, but this is a separate lot.
It is a separate lot, yes. Yeah, 186 and 192, I believe this one is, are, are separate lots.
And the setback, setbacks all conform?
Yes.
So the only issue is this?
Is that third garage door.
Okay.
All right, Scott?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
James?
No questions.
My questions were already addressed through Ken. Public comment? I don't see one single person in this room.
The chairs are all in support.
They, they sure are.
Chairman, motion to close?
Second.
All right, motion closed, made by Scott, seconded by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve with conditions?
Oh, come on, Ken, close it out. Make your last.
Sure. Go ahead.
To approve.
All right, motion approved made by, I'll, I'll give it to Ken, seconded by, seconded by Scott.
Sure.
Very good. Findings?
And then, I guess, I find that conforms to the bylaw under 240.
240, 23G1B and 240, 216.
There should be some language in it that, that the definition of, of the three-car garage not being a three-car garage, but the third bay being.
Well, I think the bylaw does indicate the size too is, is a factor greater than 900 square feet. I remember correctly.
You're, you're correct. GB is for, if the garage is more than 900 square feet or 50% of the.
Right.
I will admit that the, the language, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, there's plenty of language in here.
The language is a little deceiving, especially for people like me who've never intended to house more than three cars, but the, the language specifically says for more than two cars.
No, there's, supposedly, there's a bylaw rewrite being pursued. That's been going on a while.
Are you going to the planning board from here?
I'm not going anywhere. Yeah. So I think, I mean, I don't think there's a lot to find. It conforms to the, to the bylaw, uh, the special permit requirements and further the plan.
We can put, we have the CONCON order conditions. And then on the conditions, all the referrals, including CONCON for erosion and sediment controls, the water department.
Yeah, we've had some issues where conservation doesn't issue a lot of conditions, but engineering defers to conservation if conservation looks at the application at all. So, the new default is the soil erosion and sediment control issued by engineering if that should not be covered by conservation.
Perfect. Well, it's under construction and there are hay bales there.
That works.
I think we're good.
Conservation has been watching this project very closely.
Anything else for either findings or conditions?
I guess we normally do the no-havable space.
Yep. All right, so if that does it, for one last final sign, that was a motion made by Ken to approve with conditions, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mr. Tully, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Almost did. It was the eye roll that put them over the edge.
If we were on Zoom, we'd be here until 10:30.
I wondered if.
All right, open meeting items, voting the minutes for May 20th and June 3rd.
You keeping this or this going in the.
We're deferring the 3rd, but May 20th.
Probably keep it for a bit.
All right, May 20th is, May 20th is good. Has everyone had a chance to review?
Some motion to approve May 20 minutes.
Motion to approve made by Bob, seconded by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Table in June 3rd. Reviewing the draft decision for application 22-21, Messner. 12 Vernon Ave. in Falmouth with a vote anticipated. The voting numbers on this project are myself, Ed Van Kuren, Scott Zelensky, Mary Berry, and James Moore. So since Ed's not here, it'll be the four of us. So everyone?
Anybody wanna pay for coffee?
No, thank you. But just to review, we did have some correspondences back and forth between Noreen and town council and who else? I'm forgetting someone, I'm sure. Maybe not. Town council chimed in a couple of times. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the decision? I know the last, at the last time, we were a little stuck on the whole lock coverage issue. Not on this one, nope. Anyone like to say anything or you think we're, we're ready for a vote? I think that was all clarified in terms of lock coverage. Anyone? No? Good for a vote?
I'm not on it, so I'm.
No?
I'm happily sitting back.
Yeah, I guess you are.
I used to live on Vernon.
Scott, Mary, James, anything?
I, no comments.
All right.
Noreen, I was fine with the draft.
Mary, good? All right. Would anyone like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I can.
Motion to approve made by Scott and seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nothing? All right, passes unanimously. Board updates? Is there anything? Board discussion?
Question, a question about, about the, what's going on with that recodification?
Uh, it's back up again. So we have a meeting coming up. They renewed the contract for the bobs that are doing the basic review.
So the issue of what a structure is should be taken up.
At the next one, yeah.
Don't forget.
Well, you.
I mean, I think.
You have a definition of structure and you have a definition of principal structure. I think the, there's some fine tuning that needs to be added to the language so that it's more clear to those of us who use the bylaw all the time and those who are applying.
Right, but also as houses now, you know, they, I've seen some pretty elaborate patios with kitchens on them, everything else.
Yes.
Elevated, and so I think there needs to be some clarity. That's not a patio. That's not paving.
Well, I think there's two things. I think one is elevated patios versus on-grade. And then the second part is what is built in.
Right.
Which is, as you point out, you know, some places have even the huge fireplaces.
You start running amenities.
Outdoor kitchens.
Oh, yeah.
So a lot of communities are now looking at applying setbacks to those build-in, built-in items. So again, I would say that's gonna be something that you're gonna need to add to your bylaw because otherwise you're gonna get, people will put those outdoor chimneys in or whatever else, and it's gonna be right on top of someone else.
Can I share a story about Falmouth zoning and the devil in the details? My parents' first house on Hudson Street has had an oversized detached Gabriel garage. It was almost bigger than the house. Previous to my parents buying it, the previous owner won in Land Court because there was a board nailed into the side of the building to the side of the Gabriel garage. And that was, the way the bylaw was constructed, written was quote-unquote "attached." So, the devil's in the details with zoning.
And it's expanded since then.
It has.
All right. Anything else from the board? One last item, since we're still live on the record. There's a little something for you, Ken.
Wow, you want me to look at what's in here?
What the hell?
Anything that can be consumed tonight?
If you want it to be.
Certain places, yes.
Hey!
Hey!
My favorite.
Excellent.
These are great during the meeting. Well, thank you, guys. Been very kind.
Thanks for everything.
And, uh, these are very nice honors, so.
Well, if you get on water quarterly, please come and chime in as much as you want.
Yeah, Ken, we're going to require supervision.
Yeah.
And cooperation and, yes, you can help us with anything that we get stuck on. You can come back and opine.
Yeah.
As a member of the public?
Well, I may submit a letter regarding your outstanding 40Bs.
Excellent. And there's always public meeting.
And gentlemen.
There sure is.
There's a plan to be executed.
No, I understand that.
On the card.
But I'm not sure.
A Mylar for Helms.
Oh, okay. What, what address is that? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, noted. So we do have to. We will have to, everyone sign?
We have to sign off, yeah.
The Helms circle.
Is it?
It is.
Just the top one or all?
I think there is a Mylar included there.
Oh, okay, oh, that's out, that's out the back there.
Yeah, and I think the Mylar is the most important one.
All right. Well, we can all do. We can all do that off the record, I guess. But while we're still on the record, Ken, thank you for everything.
You're welcome.
We can go celebrate very shortly.
Okay.
And your seat's gonna be a big one to fill.
Well, I appreciate that. But you have, you have plenty of good people here to do it.
We sure do. All right. Anything else? One final time, anything?
I will.
All right. Meeting adjourned.